Good evening and welcome to the August 10, 2023 meeting of the Longview City Council. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Michelle Wallace and Shelley Smith with Buckner Children and Family Services, which has become, which has locations throughout Texas, Mexico, Central America, South America, and Kenya. Buckner provides a wide range of services from senior living to family coaching, foster care, and adoption services, as well as housing and support to single parents in college. This past Saturday, the local organization attributed 2,000 backpacks during the Animals Annual School Supply Training Partnership with First Baptist Church of Longview. Congratulations to Michelle, who recently took on a new role as manager of program administrations for Buckner across all their domestic programs, but Longview will continue to be her home. Please rise.
Thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just come to you right now and thankful for a city that we live in that puts an importance on ministering to children and families. God I just thank you for the opportunity that we have as Buckner to minister to families who, in the midst of challenges, in the midst of struggles, that we can come together as a community and be a solution for them. Thank you for this opportunity and the importance that this council places on serving families and to lift, in lifting them up and to, so that the least of these can be, have attention in our community of that we care and that we are a loving community. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Let's pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much. We're not a citizen of comment. I have no speaker cards. We will go to public safety update. Chief Moon.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. McPhee. First of all, our stats for July real quick. Priority one calls stayed at four minutes and 30 seconds, so again, under our five-minute threshold. Calls for service were 5,762, with traffic stops being just over 3,200, with DWI, 31 DWI cases for the month, and crashes at 158. Also, this one's, uh, forgot this one last time, but I still wanted to go back and add it. This is from July 4, and this was actually 140 kids total that came out between, uh, Gen-8 and YM360, and these kids were from several different states, and their, their project this summer was cleaning up, and they worked six locations. They were picked by our par supervisor, our police par supervisor, and they did a great job that day, and it was, it was hot, but they did good work. So we're definitely thankful for that. And then we had a 10-year breakfast on July 18, and we have pictured there left to right Fred Reynolds with 25 years of service, Leroy S. Johnson with 10 years of service, Jedana Gibson, our crime analyst with 20 years of service, Melissa Dobbs, our record supervisor with five years of service, Captain Russell Washburn with 30 years of service, and Ladarian Brown with also 10 years of service. So definitely proud of all of them. And then we were invited by the Longview Public Library for their Summer Reading Club end party, and we came out, and there was actually an anonymous donor that had several tablets that were purchased to give out to the community, and so we were able to participate in that, and definitely thankful for being invited by the, the library to participate. And we came out for a little show and tell with Seesaw Children's Place on July 19, and Officer easily did a great job, and see that the kids were, they always liked to see the lights and the sirens go off, so they enjoyed that. And again, just a reminder, I know for at least the next 10 days, our, our temperature will stay over 100 degrees. Uh, we've done a couple demos with this, and you can see on 102-degree data, the vehicle actually got up to 172 degrees. So anything, anything that you value, please do not leave in your vehicles and be mindful of that. Uh, it's just, it's still very brutal out there. And yes, it actually did cook those, baked the cookies where you could actually eat them, so that day, so it's, uh, it's that hot. And then we also had a commissioning ceremony on July 26 of six of our newest officers, and it's Braden going left to right, Braden Ainsworth, Maxwell Chappell, Keela May, Timothy Eklund, Addison Cozy, and Paul Patrillo, and they will actually start out in the field Monday, this coming Monday. And we had some promotions on July 31. We have two new sergeants, Anthony Minyard and Sheila Del Conti. And with Officer Minyard promoting to sergeant, he's been our canine officer for, for many, many years, and he has had Daylo since Daylo was 14 months old. Daylo will actually be 10 in December, so that's generally the lifespan of a canine, um, police canine anyways. And so he went ahead and retired last week, and he will spend the rest of his days with, with the Minyard family. And we have our national night, national night kickoff party coming up on the first Tuesday of September, September 5, and then will actually be followed by a national night out on the first Tuesday of the month in October. So we definitely would like to see everyone register. My goal is to actually have 100 parties this year, so I'd love to see 100 parties. We actually hit that before COVID. We haven't been there since, so I'm ready to kind of get back to where we were. And Citizen Police Academy, if you're interested in knowing fact from fiction and what your police department actually does, please come out, sign up, and our first class will start September 7. And with that, if you want to join our team, we're, we're cutting down on our spots that we have for vacancies, but we still have some. So if you want to be part of our team, definitely lucky to see you apply and come try out. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Moon?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief Stillman. I think that's him.
Well, Mr. McPhee said he was going to dress up tonight, so I had to follow suit. Good evening, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. McPhee. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an update of the fire department since our last meeting. Uh, we too had some employees that had hit milestones at the most recent 10-year breakfast. Those employees pictured there from left to right are Robert Collins with five years, Tim Clanton with 15 years, Kelsey Trotty with 15 years, Ross Dyer with 15 years, and Clint Stillman with 15 years. So we're certainly proud of each of them. And even though we had three others, Corey Hastings, Nick Killian, and Kyle Disgum that couldn't make the ceremony, uh, we look forward to many more great years with these employees in our department. Uh, we also onboarded recently three new fire apprentices. This is helping us get closer to closing up some of our vacancies that we have in the department. Uh, coming onboard with us were Fire Apprentice Kobe Nguyen from Gilmore, Fire Apprentice Garrett Bird from Tyler, and Fire Apprentice Joe Dembowski from Colorado. Joe actually discharged out of the military and did an internship with us for several months and figured out that this was the place he wanted to come to work. And he's already, he's already spread that word to other military fellow military people, and, and they're looking at us. And so we're certainly fortunate for that, and, and thank him for sharing that, that knowledge in the ranks of the military. And Chief Moon mentioned it with the cookies. It is certainly hot, and, uh, it goes without saying that our heat-related emergencies are on an uptick. Uh, certainly encourage people to know the signs and symptoms, the differences between heat exhaustion and heat stroke, and to take, take plenty, take, get plenty of rest, stay hydrated, and watch out for one another. Uh, along with this, are the weather conditions are extremely dry. You may be aware, the county went under a burn ban earlier this week. Uh, I just came back from Austin today, and it is dry and crunchy there. They, they're, they're having a lot of wild and urban interface fires. They burnt down an apartment complex in Cedar Park there, just northwest of Austin, last night because of a wooey fire. Started out in a pasture and made it up into some property, and, uh, it was a big deal. And, uh, they're burning all around down there. So it's just a matter of time. If, if our conditions don't change here in northeast Texas, uh, we're going to be on the radar for some serious fire problems. And we would like to thank, uh, wish a fond farewell to Fire Driver Engineer Bubba Perry, who will officially retire from the fire department on Monday, the 14th. Uh, Bubba and I actually were working in the trades before, uh, I think both of us came to work here at the city. He was working for a plumber, and I was working for an electrician back in our younger days. And, uh, Bubba has certainly done great things for us. He's been primarily working as a fire driver engineer at Station 3, uh, Driving Truck 3, as a member of our special operations team, and, uh, we wish him well in his retirement and thank him for his 26 years of service. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Stillman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Now, to consider agenda, any items council like to pull off for separate discussion? If not, come.
Yes, I do, Mayor Matt.
Okay. Mr. Wade, which items?
E, F, and G.
E, F, and G. Any other items? Okay, we'll begin with E. Mr. Archer?
Yes, sir.
So my question is, sir, and it basically applies to E, F, and G, and I'll save everyone time. You could just answer it. Um, but it's basically what procurement laws, regulations, internal policies which we use to ensure fairness, transparency, and competition throughout our contractual selection process?
We, we always do sealed bids on any of these construction projects. So that's reviewed, then we have a bid opening. Everyone's there present, bid, open those bids, and, uh, and then make the award after that's reviewed by our consultant and by our staff.
Great. Thank you for your answer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, is there a motion?
I move to approve, sir.
There are second. We have motion of second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now to action item. Consider matters incident related to the issues of the sale of our city, Longview, Texas, general obligation improvement laws. Mr. Martin, welcome, sir.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, we've provided, um, booklets for everyone this evening, uh, going over the sale and, uh, various pieces of that. We are not going to go through the whole book, uh, with you tonight, but we would like to direct you to a few things. Primarily, the last few pages behind tab two, if you don't mind, just want to show you, um, how the competitive sale went today. The last few bond sales we've had here in Longview have been negotiated sales. The market was such that we, uh, took competitive bids here and had a very great sale. I'm on this page that looks like kind of a computer print out here. It says S and P in the top corner. Um, these are the, this is what, uh, the bid specs were. Generally, uh, they use a form, uh, but it's kind of like eBay these days. So you bid, and you have a deadline for the bonds, for the bids to be due. That was at 10:00 AM this morning. So we knew who the winner was. Behind that sheet, there, you can see the bid results. We had six bids, uh, and we're pleased to report that the lowest bid was 3.927177 percent from Piper Sandler. Um, do want to point out that out of these six bids, um, you, you did very, very well, a very great sale for you to get six bids. You all had a lower bid than bonds that were sold for, uh, similar type credit ratings and 20-year bonds just like this for the city of Bedford that sold on Tuesday at 3.98, the city of Bernie that so also sold on Tuesday at 4.06. So congratulations on 392. That's fantastic. Behind tab three, do I need to stop?
No, you're good.
Okay. Behind tab three is, is the, um, is the nutshell of really of the financing, and that starts out with this sheet here that looks like, says sources and uses of funds. It's a balance sheet of where the money's coming from and where the money's going. This is the last piece of the 2018 voter authorization. So you have no authorized bonds left for those types of projects. Um, so this, you will issue 22,640,000 in par amount of new bonds with a premium that will bring you uses, total funds available of about 23.7 million. Out of that, 23.4 million will go into the construction account for projects. Again, that flushes out all of your authorization. The costs of issuance are shown there, and the underwriters discount, that's basically the sales commission to Piper Jaffrey that was built into their bid. Behind that sheet shows you, uh, I promise that's not an eye test, uh, reading from left to right, showing you your existing debt payments, and then following all the way over to the right to what your new debt payments will be. So the payments on this new issue of, of roughly $23 million is about a million, is about a million 720 a year. I'm thinking, visiting with Angela that that number that she had kind of had in her mind was, it needed to be under 1.8, so we hit it. Um, behind that next sheet shows you the way the bonds are sold. Um, these are high, interest rates of 5% to yield a lower rate. That's what generates that premium, so you're not borrowing as much money. So it's kind of like a buy-down, really, uh, so you're paying a little bit higher rate, but not having to issue as many bonds. The next sheet shows you, uh, in, uh, the name of transparency here, all the costs of issuance budget, all the vendors that will be paid through this transaction. Uh, the remaining part of the book, I'm happy to go over, and you can go over at your leisure, and if you have any questions, um, city manager and finance director know where to find me.
John, um, thank you for this explanation, and thank you for the good job on the sale of the bonds. And if, if I remember correctly, this, since this is our last issuance of bonds, we, we have done pretty well on all the, all the bonds we've sold throughout this whole bond project. So I think we've, we've fared fairly well in the financial market.
Yes, you really have. Despite, you know, we got really spoiled a couple of years ago, uh, when, in that 2% range.
Right.
And, uh, days gone by. Um, so that was a, a nice little blip, and we're kind of at normal now. So, um, uh, yes, the, and we have come in, I can't remember what the pro forma was in 2018, but I think we had estimated the, the rates altogether to, you know, be overall in the four and a half to 5% range.
Four to 5%.
Yeah, so we are.
We've been under that.
All the way.
Every time.
Every time.
So we've, we've done a.
Yeah.
We've, let's just call it a good job, not lucky. We've done a good job, and I appreciate that very much.
There's some luck to go, too.
Well, it's okay. We'll take it, but it's a job well done.
But I'll take good job as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any question, Mr. Martin? Okay, is there a motion?
I move to adopt an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Longview, Texas, General Obligation Improvement Bonds, Series 2023, and approving all other matters related to thereto.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again, sir.
Thank you.
Renata zoning of a public hearing, consider application Z 23-19. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. McPhee. Uh, the applicant is requesting two rezone lots eight through 13, Block C of Gregton Heights subdivision located at the southeast corner of East Grand Avenue and Avenue C from heavy commercial scene here on this map to Single Family Five zoning district. Um, currently, some of the lots are occupied with a single-family dwellings. Uh, the existing, uh, homes were constructed between 2017 and 2020. The applicant would like to build two single-family homes on the two vacant lots that are left. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This is a required public hearing, which is now open. Any questions, Ms. Choi?
I do.
Mr. Bertle?
These fall under the SLIP program?
Uh, yes, sir. They do fall in the SLIP program.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing held to consider application S 23-06. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for a bed and breakfast in Single Family Three zoning district located at 701 Noel Drive. A specific use permit is required for a bed and breakfast in Single Family zoning district to ensure no negative impacts on surrounding properties. The applicant is renting out his garage apartment while his family lives in the main structure. Uh, the UDC defines a bed and breakfast as a residential unit offered for rental to guests for residential purposes for a period of 1 to 30 nights where the owner or leassee of the unit must be living on-site on a permanent basis. Uh, such rentals may include a shared room or a single room. Uh, these uses are conducted by homeowners or tenants and not by a hotel or a business. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This is a private public hearing, which is now open. Mr. Raymond Gideon is here for questions, if anyone has them of him or Ms. Choi. If, if there are no questions, public hearing is now closed. Mr. Wade, you have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion of second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing held, consider application S 23-07. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for indoor amusement in general retail zoning district to allow for the use of a radio-controlled car track located at 1615B Pine Tree Road. A specific use permit is required for indoor amusement in general retail zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Mr. Mark Massengill is here for questions. Any question, Mr. Massengill or Ms. Choi? If not, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing, consider application S 2308. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for a spa, salon, or barber shop in Office Zoning District for 1514 Judson Road. A specific use permit is required, uh, for this use to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. Uh, currently, there are several spas and salons, uh, located all along Judson Road, specifically within, uh, the block, this block. Uh, Judson is a principal arterial roadway and is maintained by tech dot, and this type of development is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Mr. Jason Jones is here for questions. Any question, Mr. Jones or Ms. Choi? If not, the public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
There are a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi. We're now to budget items. Discuss the proposed 2023-24 budget. Mr. McPhee?
Good evening, Mayor Mack, City Council. Last month, I presented the proposed budget for the coming fiscal year. Tonight's meeting includes the opportunity to, to discuss that budget before you consider adoption of it during your meeting. This is an overview of the total proposed budget for FY 2324, which is virtually the same as my initial presentation. The main difference is that the final property tax valuations significantly exceeded the initial valuations we were provided by our appraisal districts. With that in mind, I am proposing the 3% reduction in the proposed tax rate. This reduction enables us to maintain our balanced budget proposed last month with the same expenses and provide financial relief to our residents. The no new revenue rate is calculated at 48148, and the voter approval rate is 56189, which is the proposed rate for this FY 2324 budget. The next thing I will show you is the matchstick chart, which shows the reduced property tax rate. One thing I'd like to highlight here is that the portion of our rate assigned to the maintenance and operations has begun to decrease with this recent valuation. This next chart actually shows that the MNO portion of the tax rate is in a downward trend. Minimizing the portion of property taxes needed annually to support the maintenance and operations is a key element to ensure a healthy financial outlook for the city moving forward. That basically concludes the adjustments to the budget proposal, which are minimal. I thank each and every one of you for the questions and comments I have received since our last discussion, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this point.
Any question, Mr. McPhee? Mr. Carpenter?
What was the current year and what is the new year rate?
5789 is the current year rate, and the proposed rate is 5619.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
So what that in essence is, is the property values, as we all know, have come in extremely high from the appraisal district, which is what it is. We have no control over that. That's not a City of Longview, uh, thing. We just have to adjust our tax rate based on that, and it is nice that we can reduce our tax rate, although people are paying a higher property tax rate. We have no control over that. So residents, please do understand that has nothing to do with the City of Longview. We are able to reduce our effective rate because of the high property tax rate. And so it is some form of good news for the citizens.
Any other questions, Mr. McPhee? Okay, we have a discussion on the proposed fee resolution.
So included in your budget books is also a copy of the proposed fee changes for FY 2324. These changes are primarily due to three separate, different considerations. First one I'd like to highlight is we're proposing a minor reduction of fees associated with parade permits and outdoor event permits, really to encourage coordination between the public and city services. Another set of adjustments is related to an increase in costs for materials that will affect utility tap rates. Finally, there are some proposed changing some fees in the fee ordinance related to pre-treatment of wastewater effluent that we receive from industries, but understand that this fee change will actually align with the state-approved plan that we've been following since the state adopted the plan. So it's really more of a housekeeping measure in that. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding those.
Any question, Mr. McPhee, on the proposed fee resolutions? Thank you very much for your participation. Thanks for all your input, Mr. McPhee. We are now to items of community interest. We will start with Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, one thing I'd like to, just all stop for just a minute and, and let's just keep, uh, keep away in our, in our hearts and our minds. That, uh, I've been several of those places that are now charcoal, and, uh, it's just a bad, bad deal, and there, the fatality count continues to come up. So, uh, keep those, uh, families and tourists and everything else that's going on over there. Uh, since we last met, we've, uh, we've lost two very significant Longview builders. Fran McDade, who was, uh, the first woman president of the East Texas Builders Association, passed away, and, uh, she and Mr. Cuppatrick and several of the other builders from, from the many years have put several hundred homes in the, in our town, and, uh, in fact, Fran's daughters are, are both builders, too. So, uh, that one, and then we, uh, we've also lost Joe Pinkston. He is, uh, was one of the principals of East Texas Homes, and I think Joe and I together have been through about 200 houses in the last seven years, and, uh, both those people are certainly going to be missed. Uh, just, just good people, Doc. Just, uh, really, uh, spent a lot of time trying to get people in, in housing, affordable housing. So, uh, Pine Tree's gonna kick, everything kicked off, I believe, tomorrow, and so, uh, Chief Moon didn't say it, but that sign that flips out from those big yellow things that says stop. I was told today that those are not suggestions. Uh, so we need to be, uh, all of us remembering where the school zones were. They've been pretty much the same place every year, and, uh, we've got, let's see, I believe, Longview started Monday. Yeah, and then, uh, Spring Hill to yesterday and today. So all the kids are coming back in for hopefully a good, uh, a good year. And, uh, uh, East Texas Food Bank will be at Gregton. It's, uh, First and Third Thursday, and they will be, uh, back at it pretty quick. They're up to about 300 families. Also, the, the one that the city helps with, the East Texas Food Bank Distribution, will be going this Friday, the 11th, from 9:00 to 10:30 over at the convention complex. If you've got any time and would like to come out and help them with this heat, I'm sure they would very much appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Noddy?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, yes, as, um, Tim said, we are off to a great start of this school year. I want to personally say thank you to all organizations and individuals who had a school supply drive. I think they were going on everywhere on Saturday, but a special thanks to this group right here. This is my graduating class, uh, Mayor Mack, class of 78, the greatest class to ever leave Longview High. Uh, I mean, but I want to say thank you to them because they're very active, uh, in the community. So thank you to all who, uh, played a part in getting this year kicked off to a great start. Uh, with their contribution, we were able to, uh, give apparel to J.L. Leverhard, to, uh, Bailey's Elementary, and also to Longview Montessori. So, uh, great job, class of 78. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Mr. Wade?
Yes, sir. Um, I also want to thank everyone that came out. We had a back-to-school community fair on last Saturday, August 5. Um, it was an amazing turnout, as you can see from these photos here, it was held at the new and improved Broad and Recreation Center. Um, there's so many people that volunteered, companies that sponsored goods. We had a basketball camp, um, just for Mr. Carpenter's sake. He'll be able to see that I was actually there.
He'll be able to see that I was actually there working. That's what the towel signifies. It's because I was working and I was sweating. That's why, Carpenter, I was actually working.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome, sir. You're welcome. So I want to thank everyone. It was a great day. Very happy to be a part of it. And, you know, as everyone has mentioned, it's back-to-school time, so please be aware of our young folks boarding and unboarding or offboarding, getting off buses, school zones. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Newstead?
So a couple of things for this Saturday. First is CASA has their run, a 5K fun run this Saturday at 8:00 AM. It's at 110 Triple Creek, Longview, Texas. So go out and support CASA. Should be a blast on that one. And then also next, we have May Cobb. She's on her third book. She's a local author that now lives in Austin, but she's coming in for Saturday at 7:00 PM at Books in Barrels. And she's going to be talking about her third book. And this one was recently featured on O Magazine, number one book to read for the summer. So hopefully y'all can come out and support a local author. Thank you.
Ms. Camboa?
I'd just like to wish everybody a happy back-to-school and thank Buckner for their efforts in taking over the school supply train and thank the Junior League for their years of partnering with Buckner to do that. So thank you to the Junior League and Buckner and thank you to our educators like Ms. Naughty and all our students. Happy back-to-school. Be nice to your teachers. And I'd like to thank everyone who showed up to the Heptak Coalition prayer gathering outside of the courthouse to end human trafficking. I'd just like to remind everyone that if you see signs of human trafficking, to please report it to the national hotline and help us keep an eye out for our loved ones and neighbors. We need your input. The comprehensive plan is here, so we need you to please go online and give us your input about what you think would make our beautiful city even better. Thank you to CBS 19 for inviting me to their Hispanic Leaders Roundtable and allowing me to share my perspective as well as that of our Hispanic residents and our citizens. We would like to thank Public Works. Thank you, Mr. Archer, and your team for working so hard to clean up debris. We've had a lot of storms in East Texas, so we'd, I'd like to remind everyone to please be kind to our Public Works guys as they're out there working hard to keep our city beautiful. But if for some reason you still have debris now that we've gone through the collection process, please make sure to submit your request through City Send or give us a call. And worst-case scenario, give your council person a call. And welcome, K-Pot. We're so excited to have you in District 5. I had the pleasure of trying you out and thank you to this lovely young woman coming all the way from California to help open the restaurant and make sure that the culture is what they are doing everywhere that they're opening. We're really excited to have you. I'm done now.
That's it?
Yes.
Ms. Bertle?
I have nothing.
Mr. McPhee?
I do have one thing. As celebrated earlier with the tenure breakfast, you heard the public safety employees, but I'd like to give a shout out to those general government employees with five years of service. We had Leon Boyd and Quaid de Board. For 10 years of service, we had Jennifer Eldridge, Robin Edwards, Eddie Green, Tyler Waddell, and James Bald. With 15 years of service, we have Joe Duncan, Josh Gamble, Christine Chavers, and Matthew Morrison. And then with 25 years service, somebody that Brian, Brian Richardson, that I was proud to have worked with for many years in Public Works and, and I always call him Ty Rock because that, that was one of the first African-American superheroes and he was that to me, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. We do have a Rollins Park meeting.